Now begin with announcements and reports and turn the podium over to the mayor. Mayor Burkato.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate that, Mr. President. We have tonight, we like to take the opportunity when we can to honor our folks that have been with us for a significant amount of time. And tonight, we want to recognize a very special lady, Dee Nance. Dee, come on up and let us see who we're talking about. Dee is an incredibly special person, and she is an incredible employee. Dee began her career with Park &amp; Rec in 1992. She's been held to positions of recreation therapist, recreation program supervisor, and senior activities superintendent. So she's managed our therapeutic recreation programs, which deals with persons with various disabilities, and includes teaching life and social skills, money management, community outings, and team sports. But, you know, the thing that sticks out so much about Dee is what an incredible heart she has for people with disabilities. And a few years back, as you all know, we had an opportunity to build a special playground that was a playground for everybody. You walk up to the playground, you don't know it's any different than any playground you see in the country. But it is an all-inclusive playground. That means kids in a wheelchair, moms and dads in wheelchairs, whatever the various disabilities, it's open to them. And Dee took that assignment. We asked her to, you know, to research it, design it, and develop it, and boy, did she do an absolutely incredible job. And it's because she's got such a tender heart for those that do have the various disabilities. And I know that each of you shared in the come roll with me over the last couple of months where this was Dee taking an opportunity to let us, that are able-bodied individuals, to sit in a wheelchair and to see exactly what people in a wheelchair, what they experience each and every day. And that's so important, particularly for us as individuals that pass rules and ordinance and things of that nature, to see exactly what we're up against. But, you know, when you give Dee a job, it's going to be done correctly. And the other thing is that when she sees things are wrong, she's not afraid to tell you and let you know. So important. But I, you know, I can't ever say enough about you and what you've done and what you've meant to the city. And I know you're getting, you're a short timer, too, aren't you? What have you got, another, do you even have a month? I didn't think so. Three days, three days. Well, I'm glad we caught you. But we're going to miss you and just your knowledge and your heart and your way you work. Your work ethic is incredible. We wish you all the best. Congratulations on your 30 years. And I hope you'll give me your cell number so I can call you back with congratulations, Dee.
(applause).
We're very honored to have some state champions from multiple sports teams here tonight. And we're going to begin by asking Dr. Middlebrooks. I believe you have some teams you'd like to recognize.
Sure. I would say ladies first, but we've got two ladies' teams here. So I'm going to start off with Coach Holland. Coach Holland, if you and your golf team will come down. This team recently won the 7A State Title, and I believe it was some hurucks on the last hole. Am I right, Coach Holland?
Yes, sir. And yes, sir, we had three birdies on hole 18.
That's awesome. Congratulations, girls. (applause). I forgot to mention, this is back-to-back titles for Coach Holland and her team. So Coach Holland, the mic is all yours.
Thank you. We sure do appreciate being invited here tonight. I want to introduce our girls. This foursome here has been very impressive this year. They are very, they impress me every day, and we're very proud of them at Spain Park. From left to right, we have freshman Polly McCracken, sophomore Emma Fortier, our senior leader Taylor Tribble, and sophomore Courtney Johnson. So our goal this year, all year, was to win another state championship, to go back-to-back. And we did that. It was pretty dramatic. It was pretty intense. And like I said, we had three birdies on hole 18. We were, it's a two-day tournament. We were behind four strokes after day one. The second day was pretty incredible. The level of play was exceptional. We came back and tied with Huntsville. So we went to our tiebreaker, which is we take our fourth score. And we won that pretty easily, actually. So all four of these girls contributed tremendously, and we are very, very proud of them. Thank you.
Next, I'll ask Coach Prater, Tracy Prater, and the ladies soccer team to come down. Now, Smurf Beard, I mean Coach Prater will go to the podium soon, but I understand they had a hard road to get to the championship and win it. And, girls, you performed admirably. And I believe we even have the Alabama High School Athletic Association Girls 7A MVP with us tonight, Tatum Allmeyer. So congratulations to Tatum. Quick picture.
Well, first of all, thank you for the invitation to the council and to the mayor. We appreciate it very much. These girls are, proud is not a good enough or strong enough word to say what we are of them. They represent our school and our community so well. Every day, they get it done in the classroom as well, and just tough as nails on the field. They've been just an absolute pleasure to work with. So our story goes, I was talking to a couple of our seniors today, saying this last two and a half weeks, I think, has been just a blur, where we had to even get into the playoffs. We had to beat Hewitt Trustville in our last game of, no, it wasn't our last game of the regular season, it was our last area game of the season. And so we had scheduled Auburn for the next week as our senior night, because, you know, why not schedule the number-two team in the state as your senior night? So we beat Hewitt Trustville, then we beat Auburn, and then we beat Oak Mountain, and then we beat Bob Jones and Vestavia. Long story short, we had to take out the number-one team, number-two team, number-three team, and number-five team to get to the state championship. So just amazing, the toughness they showed. So we'll start on this end and introduce these ladies. This is Tori Flornoy, Addie Sohn, Alex Langen, Senior Captain Sydney Sohn, Senior Captain Matty McNulty, Senior Captain Claire Dubois, Evan Williams, Matty Davis, and Tatum Allmeyer. That's our state champions. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilman Middlebrooks. Very good job. We're also happy to have with us another Spain Park Championship team, the Spain Park High School 2022 State Champion Esports Team. Come on up. We have here tonight Coach Paula Deal, Mr. Matthew Brumbolo, Mr. Reese Copeland, and Mr. Cannon Shaw. If esports is unfamiliar to you, maybe the coach can tell us a little bit more about it, but it's gaming, and it is one of the fastest-growing sports around, right, Coach?
Yes, sir.
So let's get a picture, and then I know Mr. Shaw would like to offer some comments, and then the coach.
While Coach Deal is coming up, you know, when I was growing up, and you had a kid that played too many video games, it was considered a waste of time. But now, these days, we don't, we can't say that, because I've watched firsthand the amount of practice, the mental energy, the teamwork that goes into completely and utterly vanquishing your enemies at these games. And this one's near and dear to my heart, because my son, who I'm very proud of, is up here as part of the team. So thank you, Coach Deal. Take it away.
Well, first of all, Ms. McKinley was the other coach who cannot be here tonight, but we would like to thank the council and the mayor and Hoover City as a whole for letting us come. I'll try not to take too much of your time, but I do want to kind of explain esports. It is, it's online gaming. The Alabama High School Athletic Association, I do believe, off the top of my head, has sanctioned seven sports. Now, we have not played in all of those. First, 2019, we won in League of Legends state championships. 20 was a blur with COVID, or I'm sorry, yeah, 20. And then 2021, these same guys, minus Reese, they were runner-up. And then now this year, 2022, these three guys are the state championships. They play the game, Ultimate Smash Bros. I'm not a gamer. I like to be called the sponsor or the tech support, but watching these guys, like Mr. Shaw said, it is incredible. It is a lot of collaboration. They would go down in his basement and shut the door and don't come in. Don't come in till we're done. And of course, Ms. McKinley and I are monitoring online and doing our best to understand, getting connected with AHSAA and Playverse. It's a lot. It's a whole lot. This year, we had four Smash Bros. teams, two Rocket League teams, and one Splatoon Two. We advanced in multiple teams into the playoffs, obviously them being the ultimate. But just for this year, could I give you a little bit about, the Alabama High School Athletic Association had 56 teams in Smash Bros. alone. Regular season, we played best-of-three. So you had to win two to win the match. Tournament, best-of-five, which this is state playoffs, you had to win the first three, or the first to three. Our total match record for the regular season, or I'm sorry, total, counting tournament, was 11-0. The guys didn't lose a match at all. Regular season record minus the tournament was 7-0, and the tournament record was 4-0. Now, to explain, we did lose some games within those matches, but our overall total match record was 46-4. So the guys did phenomenal. They do, they have impressed me. I have learned a lot about all of the games, about, you know, tech, support, and everything. So hopefully, it can continue to grow, and these guys, starting closest to me is Cannon Shaw, he's a junior, Matthew Brumbolo, Matthew Brumbolo is a junior, and Reese Copeland is a sophomore. And I'm going to tell you, they are amazing. They're hilarious. They love what they do. I love that they love it, and we've got about 40-plus kids in the program, so I hope it keeps growing. Thank you again for supporting us.
Next, we have a presentation from the Birmingham Cricket Team. I'd like to ask if we've come to the front, if we could, Mr. Hiren Desai, Mr. Shaheed Mokhtar, and Mr. Shams Noorani. I think they have a presentation for our police and fire chiefs.
Thank you, Hoover City Council and Mayor Burkato, for letting us, inviting us here to present a presentation for our everyday hero, Hoover Police, Hoover City Police, and the Fire Department. We actually represent Birmingham Cricket League. We are about 200 players here with their family, living family, with the family around Birmingham areas. And we would like to present a check to the Hoover City.
Yeah, if we can get the police and fire chief down, please? Yeah, my friends at the Cricket League and all of our friends at the Cricket League, when we hosted the event for them, they wanted to offer something to give back to the community, and they wanted to make a donation to the police and fire department. So we really appreciate it, guys.
Thank you, sir. Thanks for coming.
Thank you, guys. Really appreciate y'all giving back, and hopefully we can do it again next year.
Definitely. Looking forward to it.
I think he's telling how to spell Dursus. I'd like to recognize Mr. Gene Smith, former council president. Mr. Smith, always a pleasure to have you back in the chambers. Welcome back. We'll now move to our regular agenda. You'll note, if you're a regular attendee with us, that we do not have a consent agenda tonight. We did not have a work session on Thursday night, which is where we usually walk through the agenda and talk through each item. So tonight's routine will be a little bit different, so I ask for your patience as the department head, who will be representing each item, will come to the podium and share with the council and public what that item is about. We'll then have a conversation among the members, and of course, a conversation or comments from the public before we take a vote. We'll begin with item number six, the approval of minutes from April 28, 2022. Ms. Danielson. Anything to read there? Nothing to read? Approval of minutes? Very good. We'll take a motion.
Mr. President, I move for approval of minutes without reading.
Second. Have a motion and a second for approval without reading. Any questions or comments from the council? Any questions from the audience? Yes, ma'am. You come to the microphone and give us your name and address, please.
KT Thomas, 1426, scout trace. I'd like you to check the date on the regular minutes for the April meeting. I believe that the date is wrong. In the work session, it says it's the 18th, and on the minutes, it says it was the 19th.
Madam Clerk, would you mind checking that, please, while we? Do you have it in front of you?
So for the regular council meeting, so the first one of, there are three minutes to be approved. And so the first one was the work session, and the second one is the regular meeting. And the date at the top says, I believe, the 19th, but I think the meeting was actually on the 18th.
Of April?
Correct.
This is approval for Monday, May 2nd.
Right.
Yeah, the work session was on April 28, and the meeting was on May 2.
The minutes in front of me say Thursday, April 22, I'm sorry, 28th, and Monday, May 2nd. Which would be correct. Does anyone have a calendar to verify that? April 28th is Thursday, Monday, May 2nd.
But it's the minutes that you were approving.
The minutes are in front of me, and these are the minutes I'm reading. Is there, are there other minutes I'm missing?
April 28th. I just found it on my calendar.
There's Monday, May 16.
Yeah, there's January 18. So in the, in the work session, it says that the minutes for the meeting were on the 18th, but in the minutes, it says, at the top of it, where it gives the date, it What was in the packet for tonight?
I'll tell you what, this is an item that can be continued to the next meeting. Madam Clerk, if that's okay?
Okay. Hey, it is 18.
Do you have a correction we can make tonight? If not, we're happy to, okay. So would you amend the motion for one change of the date, as noted? He's going to amend his motion to move to make the one-date correction.
I'm amending my motion to approve the minutes with the change stated by the clerk without reading.
Second. We have a motion and a second for approval of meeting minutes with one change? Any questions or comments from the council?
Is that just item six?
Any other questions or comments from the audience? Yes, ma'am.
Is that just item six, or is it just the first set of minutes?
Just item six.
I mean, all, so it's all three of them? Because I have another question.
Yes. Another question.
So I want to make sure I understand what happened here. So on February 7th, the minutes were approved for January 18th council meeting.
Let me look at the council.
And everyone was here, and everybody approved it, correct? And now they've been amended, which is good. If there was an error, I'm always glad to see things improved or appropriate. So is that correct?
That's correct. There was a typo on it.
Okay. And so if I, since the ones for the fourth were removed, I mean, the 18th were removed, and the new ones are in the agenda packet. If I understand correctly, the correction was that Mr. Murphy was absent, but he was recorded as voting for item 222547, which we could call the Walmart Conditions Change? Am I, am I correct in that?
That was removed from this, so it's being updated.
But originally, the vote showed that he was absent, but he voted.
That's correct.
Okay, okay. So that's good that that's corrected, because it made the vote for three instead of three-three. So now, if you go to the bottom of the minutes, you'll see that it says the motion was denied, but it says that the motion was 212547 instead of 222547.
Okay, she's just talking about the year on that, so I'll get that changed, if you want to make the motion to amend with that, too.
The year on the resolution number?
Ordinance number. On the ordinance number.
So it was a typo on the year.
It was on the, it was wrong when it was posted the first time.
We're going to entertain a motion to continue, so we can work on these, just to make sure we got it right.
Motion to continue.
We have a motion and a second to continue the minutes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposing, aye? The ayes have it. Now move to item number seven, resolution number 6713-22, a resolution establishing the Central Business District for the City of Hoover. Ms. Danielson.
This resolution establishes the Central Business District of the Downtown Redevelopment Authority for the City of Hoover, Alabama.
Mr. President, I move for approval of resolution number 6713-22.
Second. We have a motion and a second. I know Mr. Knighton is here from our Economic Development Office, and he's joined by Ms. Christie Driver, the chairman of our Downtown Redevelopment Authority, so I'll turn it over to those two individuals.
Thank you, President Lyda, gentlemen, Mayor Burkato. We're here to talk about the Central Business District for the City of Hoover as proposed by the Downtown Redevelopment Authority. So you'll recall that a couple of months ago, you all established the Downtown Redevelopment Authority, and one of our first orders of business was to determine what the Central Business District, Central Business District of Hoover would be. The statute that allows for the redevelopment authority to exist provides that you have a central business district, and then a three-mile radius around that center point is the area that can be developed. So we had a subcommittee of our redevelopment authority who worked with Mr. Knighton and his staff to take a look at how we could best capture the most of Hoover City limits, but we could also be sure to include important and historic areas, such as the Galleria, Patton Creek, and other historic areas of Hoover. When we went through that process, I'll let Greg speak a little to how we, how we went through that process of using the GIS system to determine what was the, hopefully, optimal place to place that center point. And we want to make a recommendation to you as the council to adopt our interpretation of what the Central Business District should be. Greg, do you want to add anything?
Absolutely. As Ms. Driver noted, we worked very closely with Mr. Regis Ramos and Mr. Brian Pate from the Downtown Redevelopment Authority to make a recommendation. Looking at, using the GIS system, we tried to make certain that the centroid was placed so that it would pick up, if you look at the map in front of you in a counterclockwise fashion, key parts of Bluff Park, as Ms. Driver stated, so up where Valley Avenue intersects with Shades Crest Road, and it comes on around counterclockwise to pick up Ross Bridge, including the hotel and conference center. And then, as you work your way on around, it picks up portions of Met Complex, including the stadium and the Finley Center, and then continues on around on the southern boundaries and picks up large portions of River Chase Corporate Park, and goes up along Rocky Ridge Road, and basically follows I-65, as you'll see, before it concludes back at the original spot, up at the six o'clock position, where Valley and, Valley Avenue and Shades Crest Road intersect. But the centroid is at Restoration Drive and Preserve Parkway. I know that may seem an interesting, Preserve Drive, thank you, yes, because we, this morning, we're working on that with the GIS system to make sure you had the rights to Restoration Drive and Preserve Drive. But that allowed for the greatest collection of municipal limits and key areas of the city, as Ms. Driver made that point.
Very good. Any member of the council have a question for Chairwoman Driver or Mr. Knighton?
I do, Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
I know we didn't talk about this as much when we, we put these districts together, when we put these, the boards together, and now that we're getting into, you know, we've got a drawing, we've got a map, we've got a circle. Let's say, for people that own property that, in this district, that are zone commercial or could be zone commercial, talk about how, what this does for that property, as far as coming to you and working with you on that.
Certainly. So really, it's more what the power of the Downtown Redevelopment Authority has. So like the Industrial Development Board, the Downtown Redevelopment Authority has certain powers, and it can work on various types of projects, whether they're commercial redevelopment, public parking, any variety of projects within that three-mile radius that's defined. And so it has, through the legislation that establishes a DRA, it allows certain financing tools, bond issues, other things to be done, as well as the DRA can make loans, do different things. So right now, the DRA has been set up as a tool to begin that process as we look forward, as our city ages. And it's hard to believe that Hoover's talking about redevelopment at this point, but it, just as our city reaches a certain anniversary, it's prudent to have those types of tools in place.
Thank you. I just think that for some of the property owners, I know that a lot of that is the older part of the city. There would be more redevelopment options. They need to hear why this is set up, what that means, what that circle means to them as far as their project going forward.
Right, right. The main item is it just gives the city and the area another tool to encourage redevelopment.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Posey. Any questions, further questions from members? Any questions, further questions from members? Any comments from the audience? Seeing none, we have a motion and a second for approval of the resolution. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? The ayes have it, and the motion carries. Thank you both. Item number eight, resolution number 6690A-22. Ms. Danielson.
This, this resolution amends resolution number 6690-22 to add the addresses of 4834 and 4856 Sulphur Springs Road as properties within a drainage pipe area affecting the public road right of way.
Mr. President, I move for approval of resolution number 6690-22A.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Mr. Reeves, I believe you're here to represent this item.
Yes, sir.
I think it speaks for itself, but if you don't mind coming down, just entertaining any questions we have, it's just a change of address on this one property, correct?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Anything specific you want to add to that, or is it what you see is what you get?
No, sir. Actually, we needed to, after our staff reviewed this work with several contractors, we were afraid we were going to encroach in these adjacent properties, so just to make sure we had those properties covered. We, we apologize for bringing this back. We wanted to make sure they're a part of the resolution.
Very good. Any questions for Mr. Reeves from any member? Any questions or comments from the audience on this item? We have a motion and a second for approval. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? The ayes have it, and the motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Reeves. Item number nine is resolution number 6714-22. Ms. Danielson.
This resolution declares certain needed repairs to the Grove Boulevard roadway as an emergency and authorizes the repair thereof.
Mr. President, I move for approval of resolution number 6714-22.
Second. We have a motion and a second, Mr. Reeves. Welcome back for this item.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Lyta. This resolution, as Ms. Danielson said, is a request for the city council to consider declaring emergency infrastructure repairs to the storm sewer and roadway located on Grove Boulevard. These emergency repairs will address a sinkhole that is developed in the southbound outside lane of Grove Boulevard approximately 450 feet from the intersection of Grove Boulevard and Preserve Parkway. Some of you may have seen that the last couple of weeks, we've been researching it, try, try to determine the cause. We have had an outside vendor video and physically investigate the storm sewer to help determine the cause of the sinkhole. The storm sewer dislocation is approximately 35 foot deep. Several sections of the 96-inch reinforced concrete pipe in this area have dislodged or have damaged, allowing non-intended seepage or water intrusion into the storm sewer. Thus, that's what's resulting in the sinkhole we're seeing on Grove Boulevard. The estimated cost to address this emergency work, to repair the storm sewer and the roadway is not to exceed $125,000. And if approved, we anticipate being able to start, start this work, you know, within the next two weeks.
Very good. Any questions or comments from, or from the body? Any questions or comments from members of the public? Seeing none, we have a motion and a second for approval. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? The ayes have it, and the motion carries. Moving to item number 10, resolution number 671522. Ms. Danielson.
This resolution amends the budget for the fiscal year ending September 30th, 2022, as stated in the resolution.
Mr. President, I move for approval of resolution number 6715-22.
Second. We have a motion and a second, Mr. Rice.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our financial leadership is all at a Tyler users conference this week, and I don't even comprise the B team, but we're going to see what we can make out of this. There's $125,000 requested for the city's portion of cost increase on the Patton Chapel Road sidewalk project. You'll also see $1,114,000 listed in and out. That's the state portion, and you'll recall that in our ALDOT contract, several times, we have to front those funds, and then we're guaranteed reimbursement of 80% of the project cost. The 1.1 million is an increase in that 80%, so we have to reflect it as being spent by the city, and then it'll be reimbursed to the city, which is the second, or the third line of item number one. And then, item number two is an additional $125,000 for the Grove Boulevard repairs that Mr. Reeve just spoke about. So, the net new add to the budget is $250,000. It's 125 for our portion of the Patton Chapel Road sidewalks and 125 for the emergency on Grove Boulevard.
Any questions for Mr. Rice? Any questions from the audience on these items? Hearing and seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? The ayes have it, and the motion carries. Item number 11, resolution number 6716-22. Ms. Danielson.
This resolution authorizes the city to join as participants in certain opioid litigation settlements.
Mr. President, I move for approval of resolution number 6716-22.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Ms. Danielson, do you have anything to add on this item?
I do not. This will just, this will just authorize the city to accept a settlement amount that, that has been agreed upon through the state.
Very good. Any questions for Ms. Danielson? Any comments or questions from members of the public? We have a motion and a second for approval. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? The ayes have it, and the motion carries. Item number 12 is resolution 6717-22. Ms. Danielson.
This resolution authorizes the mayor to execute a temporary construction easement to Signature 150 LLC for the construction and installation of a, a water line. This, this resolution authorize, also authorizes the mayor to execute a permanent easement to the Water Works Board of the City of Birmingham for the location of such water pipelines.
Mr. President, I move for approval of resolution number 6717-22.
Second. We have a motion and a second for approval. Any questions or comments from the members on this item? Any questions or comments from members of the public? Hearing and seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? The ayes have it, and the motion carries. Item number 13, we'll have a reading of ordinance number 22-2564. Ms. Danielson.
I believe this is the one that is...
We do. Yes, ma'am. We will entertain a motion to withdraw based on the applicant's wishes earlier today.
Mr. President, I move to withdraw ordinance number 22-2564.
Second. We have a motion and a second to withdraw the application. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? The ayes have it, and the ordinance is withdrawn. We'll now have first readings for item 14, 15, and 16, beginning with item number 14, resolution 671822. Ms. Danielson.
This resolution authorizes the adoption of a general fund balance policy.
This is the first reading of this item. Ms. Tina Bolt has been instrumental in helping craft this, so she will be back at our next meeting, of course, before any vote, but I will just briefly introduce it, that the city, for many, many years, has never had a policy about creating a fund balance reserve. Although the city has been very disciplined in creating that reserve, we've never had a policy around it. For many, many years, the city would take $100,000 per fiscal year of surplus and apply it to our fund balance or reserve. When Mayor Burkato took office, and in 2017, Mayor, I think we increased that number to $500,000 per year, and currently, we're sitting at about four and a half months of operating reserve in the bank for a rainy day. It has been the recommendation of our CFO, and the mayor supports us having a policy by which we get to a six-month reserve of $69 million. I had the opportunity last week to spend a good bit of time with mayors and city council persons from all over the state of Alabama, and I did not find one city that can say there is financially sound as having six-month reserve. So, this is a policy that'll put us in, further in a league of our own and really establish us as one of the most financially sound cities, if not the most financially sound in the state of Alabama. There will be no vote on this item tonight, but we will have another presentation, and Ms. Bolt will be here at the next meeting for any questions or comments on that. Item number 15, we'll have a first reading, resolution number 6718-22. Ms. Danielson.
This resolution authorizes the adoption of a general fund rolling reserve policy and the establishment of a budget stabilization fund.
Ms. Bolt was also instrumental in helping craft the language on this one. I'll briefly introduce it. Many of you may recall, if you're a legislative nerd like I am, you watch the legislature quite closely. In 2011, the Alabama Legislature, after seeing many, many years of proration in our state education system, enacted what they call the rolling reserve policy for the Alabama trust, or the Education Trust Fund. Since that was enacted, our school systems across Alabama have not gone into proration one single time. So, a city like Hoover and many cities across Alabama depend an awful lot on sales tax for our revenue. Those department heads certainly know that, and so, we put our CFO and her staff in a very difficult position of trying to predict what consumer spending is going to be in the next fiscal year. Of course, she has at her access quite a few different tools to help predict that, but at some point, it becomes really a good guess as to what consumer spending and revenues will be for that next year. What this policy does, or will do, if we pass it, will allow us to look back at five, 10, 15, and 20-year models to determine what have our, what has our revenue growth been at each of those models. From studying it, I can tell you, gentlemen, that we have had years where we have had an 8% decline in revenue in 2009, and then in 2017, I believe the year was, we had a 17% growth. So, somewhere between negative eight and 17, as you can see, makes it incredibly difficult to know how you're going to budget. So, what this policy will do, will put our finance staff and our department heads and allow the council to ultimately budget, based on the mayor's recommendation, of course, taking last year's revenue and adding 4% to it because that's been our average over the last 20 years. Now, the document, and I won't get into all the details tonight, but I'd be happy to share it with anyone who would like to see it. There's a, a budget stabilization fund as a part of this policy for those years that you fall short of the 4% growth that you've averaged over the last 20 years, there will be a fund established to help you meet that shortfall. For those years where we, we come in above that 4%, there will be different funds established by the mayor and council that, that money will be spent on. So, it's quite a shift in our budget process, but it's one that's conservative, and it's one that'll, again, put us on a different playing field in terms of how municipalities budget throughout the state of Alabama, and I believe that we will begin to be the model throughout Alabama on how to do this, and, and, and Mr. Rice, I think the phone will be ringing off the hook from cities all across the state on how we did this and, and the kind of why we were doing it. So, again, just a first reading. Ms. Bolt will be back for the next reading and a potential vote, and we'll have full discussion. Any questions? I think each of the members have a copy of the policy, so any questions between now and two weeks are certainly most welcome. Item number 16 is ordinance number 22-2566. Ms. Danielson.
This ordinance amends the city code to modify Chapter Nine, which is motor vehicles and traffic, as, as set forth in the ordinance, to provide that vehicles may not park on a sidewalk or any part thereof.
This is the first reading, and Councilman Middlebrooks has been instrumental in helping spearhead this one. You want to give us a brief update on this one, please, sir?
Sure, President Lyta. I was contacted by HOA that was having some issues with vehicles routinely blocking access to sidewalks, mainly within driveways. The police felt that the current ordinance didn't adequately support action on their end, so, especially after all of us participated in the Come Roll With Me event, we, we can appreciate what that means to mobile, mobily challenged individuals. So, Mr. Martin and XO Fountain got together and produced this amendment to the ordinance.
Very good. This is only a first reading, so no action will be taken tonight, but we will come back together in two weeks to potentially vote on this one. That brings us to the end of our agenda. We'll have comments from the council, and I want to begin. The news broke earlier today that the late David Wheeler seat in Alabama House of Representatives, who represented District 47, became open, or came open at his death, and we were very pleased to have one of our own apply for that. And earlier today, the Alabama Republican Party announced that Councilman Mike Shaw will be the nominee for the Republican Party for the House District 47 seat. So, Councilman, we could not be more proud of you, and we're happy for Hoover, happy for you, and we look forward to the victory in November.
Well, thank you, Mr. President. I'll be brief because I'm, Mr. Wheeler was a friend of mine, and I've always admired the way he governed and how he was always in touch with us and how he was a friend of Hoover. I grew up in Vesey Hills and now I serve in Hoover, and I think it'll be an honor to, to run for this seat and hopefully win it and represent you all come November. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, sir. Any other questions or comments from the members? Mr. Posey.
Yes, Mr. President. We are, we got a little bit behind on appointments for the Arts Council during the pandemic, and I've got two ladies that are interested in going, emeritus, which means that they will be a member, but a member for life, but those two positions will be open, so we'll start taking applications for those positions, which is just a resume and a letter of interest in the coming days, and we'll vote on that in June, as soon as we get all of those and I have a chance to review them with everybody here.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Posey. Any other questions or comments from the members? Any comments from the public tonight? Yes, ma'am. Come on down and give us your name and address, please.
My name is Shree Beavers. I live at 641 South Sanders Road. Thank you for letting us come down today. I'd like to know, the last time I was here was in January 4th meeting, and I was asking about the damage to my property on the creek that runs beside our house, and I was told, I don't remember the gentleman's name, he said that they almost had finished a decision on what they were going to do. I have not heard, read, or seen anything about what they intend to do with that creek next to our house, because it is flooding, and I found pictures the other day, looking through a photo album, that this has gone back way before 2014, and I'd just like to get some information on what's going to be done.
Ms. Beavers, may we get your address and look up the records on that and ensure you a contact tomorrow? Is that okay?
Yeah.
We just don't have access to the records. This body doesn't have them. This is a council meeting, but we will commit to giving you an answer tomorrow, if that's okay.
That would be fine. I was told that the last time I was here.
Very good.
But that would be appreciative.
Tomorrow. Will you make sure we get her phone number, please? Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Very good. We're adjourned. Oh, I'm sorry. We're not adjourned. One more. I'm sorry, I thought you were going to talk to her.
I always like to talk to her.
Come on back.
KT Thomas, 1426 Scout Trace. While we're going through the minutes, could someone please check and see why there are no minutes for March 1st, 2021? The minutes that are posted under that date say March 15th or 16th.
Be happy to. Madam Clerk, make a note of that, please. Very good. Any other comments? Sorry for the premature gavel drop there. Now, we're adjourned.